Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the January 24th Lebanon City Council meeting. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, now we'll move on to the roll call members. Madam Cook, you can call the roll, please.
Yes. Mike Kincaid.
Present.
Keith Campbell.
Here.
Morris Jones.
Here.
Dick Robertson.
Here.
John Copeland.
Here.
Brent Wheat is absent this evening. Sierra Messenger.
Present.
Thank you.
Okay, now we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of our previous meeting. So we actually have two tonight.
We do.
Remind me of the dates.
Twelve thirteen and one ten.
Twelve thirteen and one ten. Are there any changes to the minutes? Okay, would entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from twelve thirteen and one ten.
We have a motion to approve the minutes. There are a second?
Second.
A second from John. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. And so approved. Before we move into old business, we do have the election of our 2022 officers. We are, tonight we're electing the council president for 2022. So are there any nominations from the floor?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Morris Jones as president of the Lebanon City Council for this year.
Okay, we have a nomination for Morris Jones. Are there any other nominations? Is there a second for the nomination for Morris?
Second.
Motion is a second. Discussion. Morris, speech.
I would greatly enjoy the opportunity.
Okay. We have a motion and a second and a speech. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. All right, congratulations and condolences. So you're meeting with me a lot more, Morris. So I'm looking forward to it. All right, move on to old business now. First item up is ordinance 2022-01. Council has considered rezone for 1245 West State Road 32. This is Golden Eagle Management LLC. Ben is not here tonight, so Kevin will present this. This ordinance is on second reading. Right, Kevin?
Thank you. Appreciate that. Actually, you know, here covering for Ben is the second reading, so happy to get into this project in more detail. But essentially, just to introduce it, this is the hotel property located between Garofalo Road and Mount Zion Road on the south side of State Road 32, just west of the interstate. And they are requesting a rezone from planned business industrial to planned business commercial, which the staff supports and is in more in keeping with the use associated with the property.
Okay. Any questions for Kevin on this ordinance? I know we had it read last time.
No, sir.
Okay, we'll have the ordinance read again on second reading. Rob?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Ordinance 2022-01 concerns amending the zoning map of the city of Lebanon. Pursuant to Indiana Code, the city of Lebanon Plan Commission conducted its required public hearing on December 20th, 2021, and voted six to zero to send a favorable recommendation of rezoning the petition of the property and certified its recommendations to this legislative body on December 21st, 2021. This council therefore holds that the petitioner, Golden Eagle Lodging Management LLC, is the owner of the property. The petitioner seeks to have the property, as more particularly described in Exhibits A and B, rezoned from planned business industrial zoning classification to planned business commercial. The city of Lebanon council has paid reasonable regard to its applicable comprehensive plans, current conditions, and character of the current structures and uses in each district. That from and after this date, the official zoning map of the city shall be changed to rezone the subject property from planned business industrial zoning classification to planned business commercial, and that the director planning is authorized to change the official zoning map consistent with this ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Rob. The ordinance is read on second reading. Any further discussion now from council?
No, sir.
Any public comment concerning this item? Okay. I would entertain a motion then concerning ordinance 2022-01.
Make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-01.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Dick. All those here say aye.
Aye.
Disposed. Ordinance is passed unanimously. Thank you, council. Next up is ordinance 2022-02. This is also a rezone for 129 West Camp Street. This is the Dr. Cashon rental office. And Kevin?
Yes, thank you. This is the property, approximately 0.53 acres at 129 West Camp Street. And you are correct, this is the Dr. Cashon office. Also houses some other professional office space as well. And this is a second reading of a proposed ordinance to rezone the property from single-family residential SF2 to planned business commercial. Again, obviously planned business commercial is more in keeping with the use of the property, and they have staff and plan commission support for the request of rezone.
And again, highlight this, remind everyone, part of the problem here is that there's a new tenant that's planning to go in there. There'll be a hairdresser, but that's not permitted. General office is permitted in a single family, like you use your home as an office, but you can't do a hairdressing salon for some reason. So that's kind of what has necessitated this discussion. Again, if you look at it today, it's not a home anymore. It clearly looks like a business. So any further discussion from council this time?
No, sir.
Rob, can you read the ordinance, please?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Ordinance 2022-02 again concerns the rezoning of the property and amending the zoning map of the city. The petitioner, First Stone Properties, filed its application for rezone before the city of Lebanon Plan Commission, again seeking the rezone approximately 0.53 acres that are more particularly described in Exhibits A and B from the single-family residential SF2 zoning classification to planned business commercial. Pursuant to Indiana law, the city of Lebanon Plan Commission conducted its required public hearing on December 20th, 2021, and voted six to zero to send a favorable recommendation for the rezoning of the property and certified its recommendation to this body on December 21st, 2021. Pursuant to Indiana law, this council, having considered the application and the recommendation of the city of Lebanon Plan Commission, now adopts the following. The petitioner, First Stone Properties LLC, is the owner of the property. The petitioner seeks to have the property described in Exhibits A and B rezoned from single-family residential SF2 zoning classification to planned business commercial. The city of Lebanon council has paid reasonable regard to the applicable comprehensive plans, the current conditions, and the character of the current structures and uses in each district. That from and after this date, the official zoning map of the city of Lebanon shall be changed to rezone the subject property from single-family residential SF2 zoning classification to planned business commercial zoning classification, and further that the planning director is authorized to change the official zoning map consistent with this ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Ordinance has been read on second reading now. Any further discussion, comments from council?
No, sir.
Any public comment concerning this item? Okay, would entertain a motion then concerning ordinance 2022-02.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance 2022-04.
Two.
Two.
I'm sorry, two.
We have a motion to approve 2022-02. That's twos. Motion and a second. All of those here say aye.
Aye.
Disposed.
Aye.
Okay, ordinance has been adopted. Okay, that concludes what I have for old business. Is there any from council? Okay, new business now. First up is ordinance 2022-03. Council has considered rezone of 702, 710, 714 of West Superior Street and 719 West Pearl Street. And turn us over to Kevin.
Thank you. Yes, these four lots on the petition before you, or the ordinance before you, are residentially planted lots, vacant lots, located on the north side of Superior Street, just east of Coombs. And the petitioner has asked to rezone these from industrial to traditional residential, or ID to TR in our zoning ordinance. The property totals 0.76 acres. They went before the Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission on January 18th, and it has been forwarded to you with a favorable recommendation, an eight to zero vote to rezone the property in question, as I said, from ID, general industrial, to TR, traditional residential.
Okay. Any questions for Kevin from council?
No, sir.
Okay. Rob, do you want to read the ordinance, please?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Ordinance 2022-03 concerns the rezoning property and amending the zoning map. The petitioner, M.E. Rental Properties LLC, filed its application for rezone before the city of Lebanon Plan Commission, again seeking the rezone approximately 0.76 acres. That property is located at 702, 710, 714 West Superior Street and 719 West Pearl Street, and those are more particularly described in Exhibits A and B. And it's from general industrial zoning classification to traditional residential zoning classification. Pursuant to Indiana Code, the city of Lebanon Plan Commission conducted its required public hearing on January 18th, 2022, and voted eight to zero to send a favorable recommendation of the rezoning petition of the property and certified its recommendation to this body on January 19th, 2022. Pursuant to Indiana Code, this council, having considered the application and the recommendation of the city of Lebanon Plan Commission, now adopts and proposes and approves the requested rezoning. The petitioner, M.E. Rental Properties LLC, is the owner of the property. The petitioner seeks to have the property that is described in Exhibits A and B rezoned from general industrial zoning classification to traditional residential. This council has paid reasonable regard to the applicable comprehensive plans, current conditions, and the character of the current structures and uses in each district. That from and after this date, the official zoning map of the city shall be changed to rezone the subject property from general industrial to traditional residential, and the director of the planning department and plan commission is authorized to officially change the zoning map consistent with this ordinance.
Okay. Thank you, Rob. Now the ordinance has been read on our first reading. Are there any additional questions or comments?
What property is there now? What business is listed there now?
So essentially, this was a, essentially, equipment storage lot essentially right now? Is that right?
No, they're just vacant, vacant lots.
Vacants, okay. Vacant lots currently?
Nothing on there, just.
Wasn't that where they stored it before? This is kind of over by?
I'm not aware of anything being stored there in the past.
Oh, I'm thinking, okay, I was thinking of the IMI site. Never mind. I apologize, I had the wrong address. Okay.
He's got it.
Any other questions for Kevin? Actually, Kevin, do you have the overhead of it? Can you show, do you have a copy of the overhead site?
Do you have one?
Yeah.
Do I have to take a second digitally to see faster?
There we go, okay.
There's probably a question. This is Coombs Street. This is Superior. And this is Ryan Street. So these are the four lots that are located in that location.
Okay.
And they are, as you can see, they are vacant. Grass and trees there. I'm not aware of a structure in recent memory that has been located on those properties.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from council?
No, sir.
Okay. This is on first reading, so there's a public hearing tonight. So this time I'll open the public hearing on ordinance, oh, no, not one. Okay, this time, open any public comment then on ordinance 2022-03. Okay. With that then, no public comment on this. So then now, that's been read on our first reading. So we'll take that up at our next meeting, which will be February 14th at 7:15 PM. Okay, next item up is ordinance 2022-04. Council has considered annexation of Crow Family Farms property, and this is also on first reading as well.
Thank you. This is a property located on the north side of 100 South, just west of County Road 300 East, totaling approximately 231.94 acres, and is currently agricultural use. So the project is a voluntary annexation by the owner, and this went to the Advisory Plan Commission on January 18th to request a rezone, or sorry, to request an annexation and to establish a zoning classification of single-family residential SF. So there was an eight to zero vote in favor of that petition at the Plan Commission, and it's been forwarded to you with a favorable recommendation for annexation, with the recommendation of single-family residential SF.
Okay, thank you. Kevin, any questions for Kevin from council this time? Okay, there is a public hearing on this, so I will open that up after the ordinance has been read on first reading. So, Rob, do you can read that, please?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Ordinance 2022-04 again concerns the annexation of certain real property to the city of Lebanon. This council has authority and desires to annex lands into the city as defined by Indiana Code. 100% of the owners of the parcels proposed for the annexation, as identified on Exhibits A and B, have filed a voluntary petition with the council pursuant to Indiana Code. The city of Lebanon Advisory Plan Commission held its public hearing at its regularly scheduled meeting on January 18th, 2022, and forwarded docket 22-2 to this council with a favorable recommendation, eight to zero, to assign the single-family residential zoning classification for the annexation area. This council has conducted or will conduct a public hearing on this night, January 24th, 2022, as required by Indiana law. The council has adopted or will adopt a fiscal plan for the annexation area in accordance with Indiana law. The annexation area meets the contingency requirements under Indiana law, and the council now finds the following. The annexation area generally located on the north side of 100 South, just west of 300 East, and adjacent to the existing corporate limits along the west and south borders of the annexation area, is hereby declared annexed to and declared to be a part of the city of Lebanon. The annexation area is to further include the contiguous public highways and right-of-ways of the public highways, which are adjacent to the annexation areas per Indiana Code. The annexation area is hereby assigned to council District 2 and shall become a part thereof immediately upon effective date of the ordinance. The annexation area is, again, hereby assigned single-family residential zoning classification and shall be in full force and effect upon the passage in any applicable waiting periods pursuant to Indiana law.
Okay, thank you, Rob. At this time then, I will open the public hearing on ordinance 2022-04. If you have any public comment, please step forward, state your name for the record, and you'll be heard.
Hi, my name is Jessica Montgomery. I was going to start off saying too, I think we would have more neighbors here tonight, but we have some of our neighbors that are in Florida for the winter, and then we have some that are concerned with COVID. Again, hi, my name is Jessica Montgomery. I've been a Boone County resident my whole life. I now live on 100 South. My husband and I purchased this property and built a house on it and raised our three daughters in this home. We picked this area for the rural agricultural setting and close to a small town and small schools, and we love it. I know no one in this area that is for this housing addition. No one in the country wants to look out their back door and see a lot of homes built on top of each other in a small area. That's why we live in the country. We don't want a bunch of neighbors and traffic and everything that goes along with it. Growth for the sake of growth is not good. This is going to affect many families that have been in the area for years and not in a good way. When you bring in more housing and more people, you bring in more crime, more traffic, and a lot of construction. This will also affect our schools, police, utilities, drainage issues, roads, and traffic. The drainage is a major concern, and I know everything across the road drains through my property, then goes under the railroad track onto this property. I know this property has a high water table. This is all about money, and that's sad. This community used to preserve agricultural ground. I'm sure the surrounding homeowners would rather see this property be sold to another farmer for agricultural purposes. Also, this piece of property has little road drainage, so the thought of putting houses behind houses is not thought out or wanted by current surrounding property owners. Also, if this happens, there is a concern with people drifting off the tracks and in our yards. I thank you for your time, and I hope you will really think about this and what all it entails when voting on this matter. Thank you.
Thank you for comments.
Hi, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jeff Fock, and I live with my two children on 950 South, 300 East for the past 15 years. I have loved my neighbors and the environment out there. I have been a plumber for the past 25 years and have a concern with flooding. If a housing addition were to be added, this field is on a high water table. All eight houses along mine are tied into the field tiles out there. So if you were to disrupt them, you know, you can imagine what happens. The field tiles are about 60 feet, 65 feet out. Byron put them in two or three years ago. It's been hard enough to find a place for the water to go. If I can't stop this addition from happening, I would like to work together to fix these situations to prevent flooding. We could separate our houses with a pond or dirt mound, a buffer. This would keep some pumps running and keep our houses from backing up. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Bruce Frost. I live 464 South, 300 East. This property is going to back up to the backside of my property. One thing that they did talk about was the drainage issues. We have very, very poor drainage problems out there, and Byron put several hundred thousand dollars in the drains in that property already. And now it's going to be tore out to put property in. I don't see how it's going to get better. I know one person who lives down by these people, that he has water flowing out of his crawl space at all times. So if that's continually running like that, and I have water trickling in my basement all the time. So how is, this is going to affect a lot of drainage issues. But the biggest thing that I have a problem with is we know that Arbor Homes is trying to buy this. Now, a lot of you might think, oh, he lives out in the country, he doesn't know anything. I was HOA president of Mayfair Village in Indianapolis, which was an Arbor Home property. I was there for seven years. We were there for seven years. Four and a half of it, I was president of it. The other time, Arbor Homes took care of it. Arbor Homes did a terrible job managing the development. They did not care about the fact that they left us high and dry. Basically, when they said, here you go, after our fees, here's a thousand bucks, they gave me a thousand dollars coming into the year to try to manage a whole, a property for a whole year. That's what they do. That's what Arbor Homes did. And then, and I'm also talking about mine, Wildcat was just right down the road in Franklin Township, and I talked to the HOA president down there, and he had the same exact issues. All these issues, he had the same exact issues. We had to paint our house the first three years because they do a terrible job painting it. The houses are stacked on top of one another. You don't have any room for one another. I had four, four or five neighbors that had to tear their whole kitchen out within five years of building because the water had holes in the concrete, in the water pipes underneath the concrete, and it leaked everywhere. And they had to tear their thing out. And they didn't do anything about it. Arbor says, not us, not our problem. Their baggy specs were terrible. I had to hire my own contractor to come in and look at my house and have them fight with Arbor, just to get rid of gaps. Every corner had a gap that I could see out of. These guys are terrible builders, absolutely terrible. And we're going to bring them in here with open arms, and the houses, houses look great for the first five to seven years, and after that, they fall apart. I went back to my neighborhood, and it was shameful looking, just a few months ago. Shameful. Now, I know there's some on the freaking, the neighbors who need to take care of their own property, but at the same time, you have an expectation that you buy a house, it's going to last for a while, and it ain't happening with Arbor. They do a terrible job, and you're putting an Arbor Home in here. They stack people right on top of one another. They don't care about things. And another thing to have an issue with is that they can't sell them in the amount of time they want to sell them in, they start throwing in the cheapest houses they can and get anybody in there. It's because I was told, hey, there's an expectation, we want to make sure your holding-up subdivision has this kind of house, and this kind of house, and this kind of house. All of a sudden, the sales start slacking off, and they put 1,200 square foot ranches everywhere. And now 25%, of that neighborhood that I was in was 1,200 square foot ranches. Now, I don't think that's, you know, that's not what people want, is all these small, and they weren't worth anything. They're $100,000 houses, and by the time they got wore down in five years, they weren't worth 75 grand. And that's what you guys were approving to put in.
Just to clarify, we're not approving any plans?
I understand that that's who's going to buy this property, correct?
I just want to clarify, the action tonight, there's a first reading ordinance, the ordinance only applies to the annexation of the property, doesn't actually?
The matter is, you're applying, you're doing this so Arbor can go forward with their plans. So if I can't talk about it right now and maybe put a seed in your guys' brains about the fact that Arbor does a terrible job, then I'm not doing what I should do for my family and my neighbors.
I just wanted to clarify, tonight, it's only about the annexation, it's not the actual plan of development.
The thing about it is, is as soon as you approve it, with your second reading coming up, that gives them, that gives them a way to start building or start moving forward. We don't want them to move forward. You know, we're having 2,000 acre property going right next to us already, and then they're putting this in. Now, 2,000 acre property, it's going to be a nice property. I've been to Bridgewater, and I've been to all those other places, they're great properties. And the guy in here, he was talking, he spoke eloquently, and he seemed to know what he's doing. I've personally dealt with Arbor. I don't know if any of you have, but I have dealt with them. We had, when I took over, there was people that weren't paying because, they weren't paying their HOA dues because they weren't doing anything. Arbor Homes wouldn't do anything to make the neighborhood better. There was complaint after complaint after complaint to them, and they wouldn't do anything, so people stopped paying their HOA dues. And the next thing you know, I'm the bad guy because I take over, and Arbor Homes wouldn't do anything about it. I have to put a lien on 25% of the houses in my neighborhood because they wouldn't do anything. And it wasn't hard things we were asking for, some minor spruce ups, some minor this, some minor that. It wasn't like we were asking for the world, and they wouldn't do a thing. So before you go and approve all, approve this to be part of the city, think about who's going to be coming in and taking over that part of the city. Because you're going to have a great neighborhood that all these people are going to drive by this other neighborhood, go, wow, that place is crap. Do I really want to live in a $400,000 house across the street from it? I wouldn't. Would you? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any additional public comment? Okay, at this time then, I will close the public hearing on ordinance 2022-04. Any final discussion, comments from council?
I just would remind the council, like Mrs. Montgomery said, there's several other families and members that are unable to be here tonight. We were able to listen to just a few of the neighbors and people in the area that wanted to express their opinion, and I would just remind the council that there are several more out there, they're just unable to attend tonight.
Thank you, Chuck. Any additional comments?
I'd like to ask Kevin, could you address the drainage issue?
Yeah, if you would. And the mayor has mentioned this, but I will mention it again, that tonight we're just considering a 100% voluntary annexation from the Crow family related to the annexation of this property. So we are not considering any of the other concerns that we have heard. But we have heard those concerns, and we understand those concerns. And I will tell everyone that there is ample time and opportunity for us to review things like drainage, like traffic patterns, like buffering of the neighbors' properties, frontage, and how access is gained to the property. There is approximately 2,000 foot of frontage, by the way, on 100 South. But we understand all these concerns, and we have development plan approval processes that will take us through that. We have drainage approvals that will take us through that. We have. We have consultants standing by to review all those things from traffic to drainage. So we have not, we're not ignoring those concerns, but first things first, we can't address those concerns. We can't, we can't require any improvements related to those concerns until the property is in city limits. We understand the waterfront development. We also understand the investment they're making. We also want to protect that investment. So, you know, I guess I just want to say that we have heard all these concerns. These concerns are not being turned a deaf ear to, but tonight, this is the annexation from the voluntary owner is all that we're considering, and there will be other opportunities at Plan Commission and probably back before this board for the development patterns and details associated with the project. On that note, if Arbor Homes has a representative here, if they would like to address the council or any of the residents, I'll turn that over to them.
Sure.
I have one more, one more question, though. Is it accurate to say that a developer could develop a housing development through the county? I mean, it doesn't, it doesn't have to be annexed to the city. It could be done just through the Boone County government, correct?
Yeah, Boone County Plan Commission, Boone County government has mechanisms in place to build housing developments, and they have those. I think the difficulty and the concern from the developer after the annexation would really be related to utility availability, and the county does not have the ability to serve this property with public municipal utilities. The city of Lebanon does. That's really the nature and the reason...
But it's still, it's still possible.
It is, it is still possible.
It also depends on too which, which procedure and which rules they want to be under, right?
Yeah.
Any additional comments from council? The resident of Arbor wanted to say anything?
Hello, Caitlin Doherty, Senior Entitlement Manager for Arbor Homes. Just to restate that we're only at the annexation stage at this time, and should the annexation go through, we will be back here with a rezone request. So we look forward to collaborating with Plan Commission staff and our neighbors to take a detailed look at this project and what it can be. Just from a high level, we are proposing multiple projects once we get, or sorry, multiple products, once we get to the rezone stage, which would include not only our traditional Arbor product, but our Genesis product, which is a first-time homebuyer product. Our Arbor product is at an average price point of $300,000 now. So we're looking at a different buyer than what the traditional homebuyer used to be for Arbor. We're also proposing our Silverthorn product, which is going to be, on average, about $410,000. And then we will be proposing our Destination product, which is our Empty Nester product, and that is anticipated to be about $345,000 on average.
Okay.
But we look forward to comments and working through this project in the future.
As you can see, there are passionate neighbors, and I would encourage you, as this moves forward, as closely as you can work with the neighbors, it will be more beneficial for you.
Absolutely. As soon as we file a rezone petition, we'll have a neighborhood meeting, and it'll be an open forum where we can discuss everything.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyway, we're going to close the public hearing. Are there any additional public comments? Okay. Ordinance 2022-04 has been read on first reading, so that will be on second reading our next meeting, which will be February 14th at 7:15 PM. All right. Next up is Financial Commitment 2022-01 Community Crossings Matching Grant for the Elmwood Bridge. Kevin?
Thank you very much. This might seem similar to, similar request we made about this time last year for a financial commitment related to Community Crossings Matching Grant program for the Whit road bridge. So this is for the Elmwood Bridge. And I would ask, you know, I was hoping to have at the time of this meeting updated financials. So you can see, there's a, there's a rough ballpark figure in the budget of this letter that says $700,000 with a 50% match by the city. I don't have final numbers. I will have them before this letter is submitted at the end of the week. Per the guidelines for community crossings, the entire city council does not need to sign this letter, but I would like, if you would so choose and to, to adopt approval of this letter, that you authorize the mayor to execute on your behalf. Once we have those final numbers plugged into the letter, then we can make our final grant submissions. But I apologize, I thought I would have those by the time of the meeting, and I'm still waiting on our engineer to brush up the final construction letters.
Generally speaking, though, we intend to use the bond proceeds from the bridge bond to pay the vast majority of this, if not all of it, correct?
We, we hope that this comes in at $350,000, which would be our commitment. The state would pick up the other half, and yeah, that falls right within the, the bridge bond that was issued last year, or two years ago.
Because we did do that bond for the Whit road bridge and then submit it for new crossings if we were successful. So essentially, we're trying to get a two-for-one deal with the matching grant program with the state. So, and then hopefully this will be the last bridge we ever have to build, I think, right?
I would say we would have, well...
I will put your record.
...letters on city roads that someday might become bridges.
Fair enough, fair enough. So again, we already have kind of a funding source earmarked for this. This letter just specifies that out. And then it's part of our requirements for the grants to submit that we would financially support if we are awarded the grant, essentially. So any questions from council on this?
No, sir.
The only question I had, Mayor, was the, since these are kind of a two-for-one, as you said, so do both letters go in at the same time, or is this staggered?
No, we've already received approval on the Whit road bridge. So this is, that's already been in this time last year, actually, 18 months ago. And, and so this is just for the Elmwood Bridge.
Okay. So this is, okay.
Yeah. So, and if we aren't awarded the grant, at that point, we'll have some decisions to make on how we choose to fund that. Again, this is a lower priority. Obviously, the Whit road bridge was more important to do first, so, but they, am I correct in saying that they haven't, not approved a bridge submission at this time?
That's my understanding, right? That the community crossing program has awarded every bridge grant that has been submitted to date. So we're hopeful that we will be...
Hopefully that trend continues, essentially, so.
They want to do bridge projects, and they want a lot more, so.
So there we go. Hopefully we get it. So any other questions or concerns with the letter and signing that?
No, sir.
Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to approve the Financial Commitment Letter for the Community Crossings Matching Grant Program concerning Elmwood Bridge and authorizing the mayor to sign on your behalf.
I make a motion, we approve the Financial Commitment Letter for the Community Crossing Grant for the Elmwood Bridge and authorize the mayor to sign. And it's ready.
Second.
We have motion and a second from Mike for the discussion. On their side, aye?
Aye.
Disposed? All right. That is approved. And finally, we have Resolution 2022-04 concerning the New Cold property. This is Kevin, I believe it's yours as well?
Yes. Sorry, let me pull up some notes on this. Essentially, sorry, back to the wrong meeting date here. So the resolution before you tonight is associated with our regional detention pond and the, the New Cold development. So essentially, in order to create some efficiencies in land planning there, we worked out an arrangement with New Cold in principle to swap land, essentially to swap, you know, an eight acre piece of land for a 10 acre piece of land, and there'll be no money changing hands. So we've just asked for your approval on Resolution 2022-04 related to that land exchange. Again, it's a no-cost land exchange, and in fact, we're exchanging our piece of property for a much more valuable piece of property based on the appraisals that were completed. Two appraisals for each piece of property were completed per state standard for acquisitions, and this has already been to the Board of Works. That was approved last, meaning last, earlier in the month, excuse me, and it's now before you for the resolution associated with this.
Essentially, it helps New Cold kind of square off their property in essentially trading some, some land that we need to use for our regional detention. So it's kind of a win-win situation for both. Again, as Kevin mentioned, the assessed values of the property we're trading is less than what we actually are getting in return. So it seems like a good deal for the city on that end, so. Any additional questions from Kevin from the council?
No, sir.
Rob, can you read the resolution, please?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Resolution 2022-04 is approving the exchange of real property. The city is the owner of the real property that's identified in Exhibit A, and that consists of approximately 8.475 acres. New Cold Indianapolis LLC is proposing to exchange its approximate 10 acres that's identified in Exhibit B for the city's property. On January 10th of 2022, the Lebanon Board of Works approved the exchange of the city property for the New Cold property by its adoption of Resolution 2022-01, a copy of which you've been given, and that's attached as Exhibit C. Pursuant to Indiana Code, the board can exchange property to a non-governmental entity after advertisement following as nearly as practical the procedures described in this Indiana Code and prior approval of the city's legislative body. On this date, this council will conduct a public hearing, which will hear all individuals that wish to be heard. The council has determined that it's in the best interest of the city and the citizens to recommend approval of the exchange of the property. Therefore, these recitals are hereby incorporated into this resolution, and this council has reviewed the materials and information presented to it and recommends approval of the exchange to, allows for the exchange as well as the mayor of the city to enter into any documents. Upon execution of this resolution, the council also directs the board to proceed with the exchange pursuant to Indiana Code, and it shall be in full force and effect upon its adoption.
Thank you, Rob. As the resolution mentioned, there is a public hearing. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing on Resolution 2022-04. Any public comment, please step forward. Seeing then, I will close the public hearing on Resolution 2022-04. Any discussion, comments from council? I would entertain a motion then concerning Resolution 2022-04.
Make a motion, we approve Resolution 2022-04.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second? Second from John. All those here say aye?
Aye.
Disposed? That resolution is adopted unanimously. Thank you, council. That concludes what I have from New Business. Is there anything from the council? Okay. Would then entertain a motion concerning the claims.
Make a motion, we pay the claims.
We have a motion to pay the claims. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Morris. All those here say aye?
Aye.
Disposed? Claims are approved. Any announcements from council?
No, sir.
Any general public comment? Okay. Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from John, says he wants to go home. All those here say aye?
Aye.
Disposed? All right, we are adjourned. Our next regular meeting, excuse me, our next meeting will be Monday, February 14th at 7:15 PM. Thanks for watching.